The financials.
Yes, there are, well, I'm reporting on two financials that I approved on October 15th. We had to do approval of a voucher, a payment to our county transit for transportation services provided to the department of region in the amount of $24,044.08. On Thursday, October 6, 16, we approved, or I approved the following revenue certifications for Board of D E construction fund to certify a transfer from the donation fund in revenue, decertification for the Board of Mental Health to certify the commissioners' portion of youth center funds. Supplemental appropriation transfers included a appropriation transfer for the Commissioners' Office to appropriate for retirement payout and office reorganization. And supplemental appropriation for Department of Agent Construction Fund for project contracts for the entryway, office, kitchen, and sidewalk projects. Cash transfers out of the general fund for portions of 2014 funding for the Family First Council, the Office of Community and Economic Development, Cork Technology, and County Home, as well as the third quarter interest transfers, the 2014 principal debt payment for the Human Service Building, and the local match portion for the Airport FAA Grant Number 3-39-054-1714. Travel requests, our incumbents include travel requests for Maintenance Department, Department of Water Resources. Vouchers include the fourth quarter payment for 2014 to the OSU Extension Office in the amount of $68,566.25, and a payment to the Patty Group Inc. for a local revolving loan disbursement for the Office of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $52,671.71. Do I have to do any of that? Just me report.
Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Number two, three, I think.
Yeah.
Number three is going to be the minutes for the meeting of October 7.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
I'll, uh, I'll, uh, I'll say.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion approved. The minutes for the 9, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye, motion approved. And then the financials for today. Good morning.
Good morning.
The financials today include supplemental appropriations for the Juvenile Recovery Fund for contract services and the New Development Fund for payment with their cost allocation. Travel requests for the Auditor's Office, the Engineers' Office, Department of Job and Family Services, and the Juvenile Corps. Purchase order for Myers Equipment Corp. for the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the Transit Department in the amount of $128,480. Contracts with Hess and Associates Engineering Services for engineering services for the replacement of the Coy Lane lift station for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $18,000. Payment to CNC Holdings LLC for revolving loan distribution for the Office of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $410,000, and a payment to E Technologies for the purchase of UPS communications systems for the safety center in the amount of $41,147,000.
I'll make that, I make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion approved. Thank you, Eddie. Then the Department of D E. Morning, Jessica.
Good morning. The first thing, it was Larry, was the best stewardess of Larry's services, Aunt Larry Programs Coordinator. She was part-time when I started, and what we did was, once she retired, we did not fill that position. I just kind of wanted to see what role it played in the agency. I have two I and Rs right now who have kind of absorbed some of her duties, and that's above and beyond their job description. So that position is needed to kind of help with our records. We can actually be a key man on R, coordination of maintenance and outside contractors. So I would like to internally post that position.
Okay. You can read number six.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of Aunt Larry Programs Coordinator Number 1028 for a period of five days with applications accepted until 4:30 PM on October 31st, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion approved. And then Jessica, we've got the Assistant Site Coordinator position also.
Yes, we already posted for this. We conducted our first round with interviews, and I was not satisfied with the number of applications I received. I would like a larger pool of applications. So I'd like to repost to try to get some more qualified applicants.
All right, fair enough. Number seven then?
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to re-advertise for the position of Assistant Site Coordinator Number 1005 with applications accepted until 4:30 PM on November 7, 2014.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye. Motion stands approved.
And the next one, do, and the next four, they are wellness station kiosks that UH has contacted us about. What they are, it is a flat-screen TV with an iPad as well as a scale, blood pressure equipment, so we can start doing more wellness programs for seniors. This will allow them to track their weight, their blood pressure, some of their stats and performance improvement, as well as UH being able to stream programs across this kiosk at our request. If we want to talk with a psychiatrist, if we want to talk with someone on diabetes, they can give us webinars or actually stream someone live. Additionally, it allows us the opportunity to work with other senior centers and do wellness programs and initiatives such as weight loss, such as, you know, lowering sugar levels or cholesterol levels. So it gives us an opportunity to head in the direction of health and wellness.
You say it gives them an opportunity to track, now they'll record that data themselves. It's not, this doesn't.
Own username and password. UH does not have the ability to see your username, password, and personal information.
Thank you. Okay, so if we could read all four of those then?
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and execute an equipment lease agreement with H Choices LLC for a wellness station kiosk at the West Jogga Senior Center for a period of one year in an amount of $1. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and execute an equipment lease agreement with H Choices LLC for a wellness station kiosk at the Shigrid Falls Senior Center for a period of one year in amount of $1. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and execute an equipment lease agreement with H Choices LLC for a wellness station kiosk at the Middlefield Senior Center for a period of one year in amount of $1. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and execute an equipment lease agreement with H Choices LLC for a wellness station kiosk at the Chardy Senior Center for a period of one year in amount of $1.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye, motion is all standard approved. Thank you, Jessica. Have a good day. Okay, then you've got the Jogga County Airport. Patty cannot be here today, so they're just require, the Board's request to reappoint and it'll be the cost of. Okay. Any questions on that?
No, that's fine.
We could go ahead and do a read on number 12.
Jogga County Airport Authority is requesting the Board reappoint David Hassett-Lurton Jogga County Airport Authority Board for a four-year term January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye. Motion approved. Then we've got the Office of Community and Economic Development. Good morning, Shelley.
Good morning. These three reports are our semi-annual reports going up to do for these three programs every year with housekeeping, basically to make sure that we balance with, between our books, our auditor's books, and the state's books. All balanced out, so you see the numbers there, and we'll do another one in December then.
Okay. Do we want to do 13 and 14 together then?
13, 14, 15.
15, okay.
Three of them, if you want to do them all together.
That sounds perfect.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, RLF Semiannual Report for the Period January 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2014. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Community Development Block Grant Program Status Report, Grant Number BF131AZ1 for the Period September 1st, 2013 through September 11th, 2014. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Housing Semiannual Program Income Report for the Period January 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2014.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion is all standard approved. Thank you, Kelly. And then we've got the Engineers' Office. Morning.
Morning.
All right.
The first item that we have on here is change order approval, final, first and final, for the application of polyester pavement markings. It was an increase of about $3,200 bucks, and that was some additional strike, and we did some additional edge lines and overset, so we added some to it just to improve some efficiencies.
Okay, I will make, I am read that.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute change order number one and final, increasing the contract with total deed construction incorporated for the application of polyester pavement markings to various county roads for the year 2014 in an amount of $3,260.75.
I make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion approved. And then we've got for McFarlane Woods Phase One.
It's just the establishment of an account for the DMD to start collecting revenue for the maintenance of the DMD districts, DMD districts.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the Jogga County Auditor to establish a new stormwater P020 McFarlane Woods Phase One Fund for tracking revenue and expenditures for McFarlane Woods Phase One.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
I'd like to mention to the engineers, I have been taking road trips throughout the Northeast Ohio. We did all of Cuyahoga, we all did Medina, we did Lake Jogga just the other day, and we're doing Lorraine tomorrow on Friday. And I just wanted to say that ODOT picks these roads that need fixing. And in Cuyahoga, of course, there were quite a few things. In Medina, a lot of their roads, the problem they have, they have cement roads, and when they, they break at the seams, then they start to have different levels, so you're, they're bad, cement. And then when we went to Jogga, I just want to make this mention, what ODOT said, they had to look really hard to find a road, and they could only find one, which was Claridin, and that was a 50 PCR, PRSR. And most of our roads are out 95. And then there was one other in Chardon, but that's all they could find. Lake County, we had a few in Lake County, mostly 615 where the big trucks are going. But we have really enjoyed the cash flow that we have received because we have gotten double the money that we would have normally received if we had been on our own. And because of being part of the MPO, we have really enjoyed having our roads. I'll tell you, it really has made a difference. And I haven't seen Lorraine yet, but I know Lorraine is a disaster. But I would just mention one other thing, and if any of you have a chance, this is really interesting, if you're going down the shore way into Cleveland, right where they have those, they took that one building and turned it into condos.
Your warehouse.
Well, right next to it, they have a big piece of land that's open, and what they have in there are lambs, lambs, sheeps. And they call it lambscape. And what they did is, this has been an experiment for two years, so they put these lambs in along the shore way, and they sit there and they keep the grass down. And then the other thing, they have, they shear the sheep, so they, they've realized over $20,000 in the last two years. And all the people who get into these condos, they want the view of the lambscape. So if you ever go down there, it's really something interesting that they're trying to incorporate a little bit of country into, on the shore way no less. So I thought that was something, I wanted to mention that, that we are in really good shape with our roads. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Department of Jobs and Family Services? I don't see anybody here. I think this is just, you know, changing the form to reflect the change in management down.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the updated payroll authorization form. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the updated accounting forms authorization form.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye. Yeah, the planning commission?
Oh, hi, Dave. Something's never changed.
Good thing I capable though, I did. Morning.
Are you kidding?
Drinking water.
Are you kidding?
Perfect.
So this is, want to explain?
Just a renewal of the ordinary agreement that we have with USGS on this ground line of that one. Includes, I believe, 31 wells throughout the county in various, at various depths, various rock formations to give us an overall view of the scene and throughout Jogga. And it's really a trend analysis if you kind of look back to see what has occurred since about the mid-'90s and then today and look forward. And the results are monitored by the USGS, we have six wells that are monitored continuously because they're instrumented so they can remotely collect the data from those. And then the balance of the wells are checked quarterly by USGS personnel. And we have on our webpage, if you go there, a link to their results, so you can track if you wish what's going on, again, throughout the county and every well.
So it gives you a, a, a look at how our water is throughout the county, kind of a broad brush look?
Yeah, that's exactly it, in a nutshell. Since we're probably 95% or more groundwater dependent in the county, the Commissioners have always thought this is an important component of the track.
Did we ever monitor for carcinogen?
That's what I was going to ask. What do you monitor besides the well, the water recovery rate and so on? Yeah, this is simply well water quantity today, but we have another report coming out soon that will address quality.
Oh, good.
So we don't have those results in hand for you now, but they should be around the end of this year. Do they do these at, do they do these at the same time when they're under this price? Very good question. Quality study is separate because it involves laboratory testing of the results, and it's much more involved. So the history on that, Commissioner, has been about every 10 years, we've done the quality study, the same wells, so that again, we have some benchmarking going on and see what's happened over the decades. So again, we've not done the quality component annually. It is, probably wouldn't be warranted to do it annually anyway, from that standpoint. Couple of the economic component to it. But this is quantity, and again, it's, we felt, again, very important to our residents, our businesses, and so forth, to have this information at hand. So if someone wants to come in and do a significant development, or even a minor one for that matter, we can demonstrate, yes, we have adequate supply in this area. When you're like to, you know, construct your industrial plant, for example, or your residential development, and so. Are those 31 wells just test wells, or are they used, are they active? Is somebody? They're active. They're, yeah. Very good question. These are private wells, for the most part. There are a couple that aren't.
Wasn't Bill Youngs one of them?
Bill Youngs, he owns South Russell. He was included as one of them, but most of these are private wells on private property that we've had an agreement with, or USGS has had an agreement with for some time to go in and, you know, do this monitoring, so.
Are we checking for that algae yet? You know, the algae, you know, in that, you know, I was concerned about that.
Not in this case.
Yeah, not in this one, yeah.
Okay, please read 20 then.
The Planning Commission is requesting the Board approve and execute the US Department of the Interior Geological Survey Joint Funding Agreement 15 EMOH022 for Ohio Water Science Center between the US Geological Survey, United States Department of the Interior, and the Jogga County Commissioners for the Period October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015 in the amount of $21,500.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
I think it's a waste of money, no. Okay.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Office.
Hey, come on, Dave.
Morning, Sheriff. Mr. Speaker. Hi, how are you?
Before we get started, just want to make sure that the Commissioners are aware that Francis Sanders passed the way yesterday, you know, on the vehicle accident.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Shot to a side.
Today, we're here before the board, our previous application for the victim working grant package has been approved. It was approved with no increase in local funding. This is the grant that we often refer to as Tracy Jordan's Grant, where we provide services to victims of crime 24 hours a day throughout the whole county. Tracy is utilized not just by the Sheriff's Office, but by police departments throughout the county, as well as, you know, state patrol, to come to scenes, to meet with the family, to help them navigate through the issues that face those victims.
Right. She does a great job. Number 20, morning.
Thank you, thank you.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Victim of Crime Act, VOGA, and State Victim of Badness Act, SBAA 2014 through 2015 Grant Award and Acceptance Form for the Jogga County Sheriff's Office Victim Services Program in the amount of $46,086.44. As part of this grant, $32,123 is being refunded from federal VOGA funds. 2015 VOGA, 2020205, with no local match from the County General Fund of $10,707.75 and $2,255.69 from SBAA. 2015 SBAA 10202053 with no local match. This grant is for the period October 1st, 2014 through September 30th, 2015.
Hey, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye. Motion approved. Good. Good. Curtis Stern, how you doing? Morning, Commissioner. Morning. How are you?
Okay.
Let me give each of you our packets. As you know, I'm here today at your request because we had some trouble getting all nine Commissioners of our three county workforce investment areas scheduled together for our annual meeting. We had our annual meeting on October 8th, 2014, and of the other two counties, exactly we had five of the six Commissioners present. So they've already received this report, so I'm going to kind of hit some of the highlights today on that annual report. In the packet is our short summary, that's my executive summary that I gave at that meeting. Just want to hit where we've been and where we've gone in the last year. It's been quite a year of revolutionary changes for us, so, you know, if you look at us last, previous to last July, July of 2013, we were completely different. We had a different intergovernmental agreement, a different set of bylaws, a different fiscal administrative agent, which was a 501(c)(3), and a different Board of Trustees that I reported to on a day-to-day basis. Well, after meeting with all nine Commissioners in the three counties, we decided to make these changes primarily because we wanted to go to the local government, council of government system. And the reason behind that is, let's face it, if our office makes a mistake with these funds, these are federal funds that flow through the state, it is the counties that end up being responsible because there are no other set of independent funds. So as a result, now, our structure as a local council of governments, I answer on a monthly basis to each representative from each of the three boards of Commissioners, Rash, Beale, Jogga, and both counties. Plus, I think it's a lot more efficient way to do business. Instead of having separate meetings where we would meet with the Workforce Investment Board and then the separate Board of Trustees, basically now, we meet four times a year with the Workforce Investment Board, a kind of a macro advisory role, but the day-to-day business is controlled by the Commissioners of the three counties who, again, meet with us on a monthly basis. So that's been a big change. The prior focus on adult dislocated worker funding, we have three basic streams of funding, adult, dislocated worker, and youth. Adult dislocated worker over the last couple of years, prior to us making some, some changes, that money was really kind of being used as a supplemental scholarship program. We were taking most of the money, individuals were coming through the Department of Job and Family Services, the County Department of Job and Family Services, and basically what they couldn't get paid to go to school for, for using, after applying for financial aid, we would supplement. Now the switch is more of a focus on, on taking those individuals that are coming through the job, seeing who we can place with employers in the area first, and then as a last resort, using that money as a scholarship supplemental program. The idea instead is, what are we doing with our dollars? We're doing more business services. Instead of looking at unemployment and working with individuals as a supply-side kind of issue, working with individuals, we are looking instead to reach out, meet with employers, and fill positions that they have open. We're now looking at unemployment as more of a demand-side issue. So that's kind of a universal change that we've been doing the last couple of years. And part of that is the Business Resource Network, which we have funded through a special grant that runs through July of 2015, and Brenda's looking forward to coming back this spring to give you a presentation. Will, at that point, not be winding down the program, but at least start winding down the grant portion of the program, and she'll have some very interesting data summarizing all the interviews that have been done with the Jogga businesses in the county, as well as the other businesses in the other two counties in the area. Another change in focus has been media youth programming. We have been focused pretty much on only serving in-school youth, those are youth that are still in high school, but for whatever reason are, are struggling. And to be in that program, you have to be a low-income youth with a particular barrier, seen as an individual likely probably to exit high school either prematurely, or alternatively, when they leave to go on to public assistance. So we take a small, select group of youth, and we're working with them, trying to break that chain, that cycle, that these individuals, to focus on them getting some type of education or employment immediately upon exiting high school, as opposed to looking to exit school and immediately go on some type of public assistance.
What is your assessment on that?
The real problem is the, the money that we receive. All in, we have about $100,000 a year that we receive, so unfortunately, with that money, we stretch that dollar as far as we can, but it only allows us to serve about 22 youth per year in Jogga County. I think the success for those 22 youth that are getting those intensive services, we do a really good job, and our success rate, I would say, is, depending on year to year, 70 to 80% of those youth have a successful outcome, but it's just unfortunate, that's about, with the funds that we receive, that's about all we can work with. So it's a great program, but again, it's just so limited in the scope because of the limited amount of funding we receive.
Now, as far as success, what do you base your success on?
The primary success indicators are those individuals, when they exit the program, they are either enrolled in post-secondary education, or instead they receive a job and retain that job for at least six months. And then, of course, how many financial things are completely different as well, too? Before, when we were under the 501(c)(3), everything was paid by check, everything went through our agency. Now we streamline it, we've empowered the county departments of Job and Family Services to pay their own bills. You know, a year ago, we didn't have online banking. Now we have, do pretty much everything online banking. A year ago, we didn't do transfers, now all the money goes to transfers. So we're, I think, much more efficient, and the money moves through, and bills get paid much more quickly. So that's kind of the year in review of what's happened. On the back page of my report, you'll see, we've got some challenges and opportunities going in, and I just want to hit the highlights and then talk about some things that are in your packet, and answer any questions you have. So where we're going in the future, challenges and opportunities, the first one is, we have to find a way to comply with the new law. WIOA is the new law, part of it goes into effect July 1st of 2015, and part of, the rest of it goes into effect July 1 of 2016. Some of the other major requirements, instead of working within school youth, we're now going to have to shift and work with out-of-school youth. Out-of-school youth, the major differences of these are high school dropouts. Right now, we're working with youth that are, that we look at as, that are already in high school but are in a danger of possibly dropout or to be on public assistance after they finish high school. Now the focus will be working with individuals who have already dropped out of high school and focusing our efforts to try to get them back into school or back to get their GED or to get them into post-high school employment. So that's one of the challenges that we're going to have to do under WEA. But it's a good, it's a good thing, we can, we're already working with some out-of-school youth, it's just in the focus, we've been working with more in-school youth. And the reason for that has been, we find that we have a better success rate with early intervention, working with the youth that are likely to drop out, doing more detailed work with them. It's easier to prevent than it is often to, you know, to have success stories with the youth that have already dropped out of school. But it's a challenge we're looking forward to. Some of the other major changes is, we've always handed off this work, adult dislocated worker work, right to the county department of Job and Family Services. We will not be able to do that under the new law. We will have to put out all of these services, including the business services, which we put that out for bid already, but the adult and dislocated worker work will have to go out for bid. It'll be interesting to see, I don't know if there will be other entities interested in doing it other than the county department of Job and Family Services, but it's something we'll find out when we put it out to bid. Unclear at this time, we may have to have it out as soon as the spring to bid, or whether the state will continue that waiver for a short amount of time. But one way or the other, between now and July of sixteen, it will go out for bid. Some of the other challenges, the Business Resource Network grant is going to, the money on that is currently set to end June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen. We're trying to find ways to continue the Business Resource Network at its current level. The five commissioners that were in attendance, they told us that, from their perspective, the number one and number two priorities with workforce going forward would, number one, be to continue to staff and operate the Ohio Means Job Centers that we're operating to make sure we keep the doors open and we're processing people who are coming in looking for work. And number two is to continue the Business Resource Network, to continue to serve businesses, to make sure that we're getting a lot of job orders in and that we're helping businesses in the community solve problems that they're facing. And I think, you know, we have already seen some of the benefits that the Resource Network has brought to the county. So I think we can safely say that even when the grant discontinues, we no longer have grant money, we'll still find a way to keep the Business Resource Network going, it's just a matter of at what level and how much funding we take from Workforce Investment Act dollars that we receive and put that into the Business Resource Network. So. Other challenges and opportunities, those are how to continue to find a way to engage employers to dictate and drive workforce education decisions, so that we make sure that when we do spend the little money we have to send individuals to school, that we're putting it into in-demand occupations. The challenge and opportunity is to find a way to continue what we've started and agreed under WEA funding. What you have to realize is that in the last fourteen years, workforce funding has shrunk thirty-eight percent when not adjusting for inflation. So when you adjust for inflation, our federal dollars that used to come into the area in the last fourteen years is really about half of what it used to be. What you have to also recognize is, in the next seven years going forward, the legislation passed by Congress does provide for funding, and it will increase funding by fifteen percent. But when you adjust that for inflation, really, after twenty years of workforce, you would see that we are going to be right around fifty percent of where we were twenty years ago. And that's unfortunate, it is what it is, and we will find a way to deal with it, but I think you would all agree that workforce is not half the problem of what it used to be twenty years ago. We continue to have issues, and those are E and F outlined in my outline, and that is the soft skill problems. You know, we have work available in this county for skilled and unskilled workers. The unskilled workers, the problem is, is finding individuals who have soft skills, that want to show up every day to work, be on time, be there regularly, have good attendance, and show up with a clean criminal background and not have any record of substance abuse problems. And that continues to be a problem in all three of our counties and really nationwide. And then finally, the challenge is to continue to develop positions of employment that provide a sustainable middle-class wage. Again, we have lots of employment in all three counties, lots of positions available, but the key is really finding those positions of employment that pay sixteen dollars an hour or more. Those are the things that support and provide sustainable middle-class wages for our families.
So the total operating budget is how much?
Total operating budget right now, two-point-four million a year comes in excluding the Business Resource Network grant. So that's our two-point-four million for all three counties. Georgia gets the smallest portion of that because of a couple of things. One, you're slightly smaller than the other two counties, and economically, you're better off. You don't have the same amount of poverty rates that Asheville and Porridge Counties do. So all in, each year of that two-point-four million, Georgia's share is only about four-hundred thousand dollars.
And your, and your actual expenditures you've got here is three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand?
That is the administrative staff budget.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, here's my only, and I respect what you're doing, my only, my only problem is this is, I mean, you talk about duplication of services, we've got jobs and family services that does the same thing. We've got our community economic development, you know, constantly, you know, working with, I just think that it gets to a point in time where everybody's kind of creating this service, but, you know, the funds sometimes would be better served to just, you know, pull those funds together sometimes to be able to assist, you know, with some of the agencies that are already in place. And I, you know, and it's almost like everybody's working for the same goal, but at the end of the day, it's almost like, I won't say competition, because there's really no competition in trying to better stuff, but it just, it's a, it's, you know, it's a, it's a healthy, it's a, it's a healthy administrative cost to manage what I would consider a minimal amount of funds. You know, and it's, at the end of the day, where does, where does the ends justify, you know, the means? And I, I just, I don't know, it's hard, because we've got organizations right now that are, that are kind of doing this, and, I don't know, I guess it's a, I'm not saying that, I'm not, I'm not here to say that this is a bad deal, I'm just saying that dollars and cents, it'd be hard to run a business with some of these numbers to say that it's, it makes sense.
I understand, I understand your point of view. We can understand that the, when you're talking about job and family services, our money really ends up in part being their money. I mean, after our administrative budget, I'd say eighty cents of every dollar, it's basically just the youth dollars, are passed on to the county departments of Job and Family Services. It's just a specialized, this is a specialized funding source, and, you know, we've just always found, at least in the past, that it was better to have a separate administrative entity as opposed to this money going directly to the county departments of Job and Family Services and having their administrative staff manage it. They might be able to do better, but, you know, our administrative costs are always capped out at ten percent, and we're always under budget, and I think we do a pretty good job. And my guess is, is their administrative costs are probably pretty close to the same.
No, you're administr, so you're at a two-point-four, but your expenditure, your total operating is three forty-eight, so you're, you're at, you're not at ten, that'd be two-hundred-and-forty thousand.
Well...
You're a hundred thousand dollars over that.
That's true, but that doesn't take into consideration the B R N grant and some other funding sources that we have, some other grant funding sources. So that's why...
So it's not truly ten percent then? I mean, if true...
It's ten percent of all the funding sources that we have.
Right.
So the total funding sources are how much?
They would be, right now...
Three?
Yeah.
You'd have to be around three-point-four...
Correct.
To be ten percent at three-hundred-and-forty thousand, yeah.
Craig, maybe you could give a little background, I think some of this, you're a creature of, I think, some of the federal regulations, and some large counties do this all within that county, but smaller counties encourage some collaboration, making a multi-county, but...
Right.
This is all workforce investment, and it's kind of federal government kind of driving how this stuff is set up.
It is, absolutely. I mean, we are a creature of federal law, and while the money does pass through the state, it is all federal, federal dollars, and we're governed by workforce. And our situation of the counties that we're with is controlled by the governor's office, and they have final decision, they approved that a long time ago. It could be that Area Nineteen changes. The governor's office could redistribute and change the counties. Under the new law, WEA, the only counties that are guaranteed that they can stay by themselves and operate this, this program without having to collaborate with other counties are those counties that are five-hundred thousand individuals or larger. So we're waiting to see what will happen, you know, will the governor's office redistribute? One of the things we know under WEA...
Less.
Yeah. One of the things we know under WEA is that we will have to do some more regional planning. In fact, I was in a meeting yesterday with five of the WIB networks here in northeast Ohio to talk about whether, you know, we would be part of that, and we'll have to wait to see from the governor's office. My guess is the governor's office will have the regional planning occur, broken up by the Jobs Ohio divisions, the counties split into six different Jobs Ohio. That's, that's what I believe will happen.
That's interesting, that is a lot of money.
Any other questions I can answer for you?
One, yes. You've referenced the acronym WEA multiple times. Can you please go back and actually tell us what that stands for, so that I, for one, can go back and research a little bit more?
Sure. It's the Workforce Investment Opportunities Act. It was passed this summer. Unfortunately, I didn't bring the citation with me, but if you Google WEA, it should come up for you.
Okay, thank you.
You have any questions?
No. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was August tenth, two thousand and fourteen. If you forget...
My pleasure, thank you for having us.
So then, on number twenty-three, we have the commissioners' offices requesting the board approve the revised budget hearing schedule moving to corner from Tuesday the twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, at three forty-five, to Tuesday, October thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, at nine fifteen a.m.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion approved. And then for item number twenty-four, the commissioners' offices requesting board cancel session for Thursday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, due to Thanksgiving Day, holiday, and offices will be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion approved. And then for the acknowledgements, we, the question arises to the day after Thanksgiving, will be the board's preference this year?
What do we do in the past?
Well, typically, that's granted as a paid day off to employees, but that's...
I think last year, we did it all.
Yeah, that was like the big shopping day, Christmas. They call that black Friday. No, but I'm just telling you what people do, they take the time off.
We did receive notification that the treasurer's office will be closed the day after Thanksgiving, and notification that Judge Beer and Judge Fury have decided to close the courthouse on the Friday after each holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's Day. It was an ask by several elected officials.
So we make a motion for the Friday after Thanksgiving?
Do we want to just do the one, do them one at a time, or do we want to do some of the board?
Some of our departments need to know for scheduling purposes, so if you at least did the one at a time.
Well, I, I have no problem with the twenty-eighth, that would be right.
Twenty-eighth, yep.
Yeah, twenty-eighth.
So then, the commissioners' offices request the board close their offices officially the twenty-eighth of two thousand and fourteen, November, day after Thanksgiving, for holiday, and offices will be closed.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion approved. And then for the acknowledgements, we've got a weekly report filed by the Georgia County Dog Board of All Dogs Seized, Impounded, Redeemed, or Destroyed for the weekend ending October eighth, two thousand and fourteen, as required by O R C three-two-five point oh seven. Then the meetings that we've got here, the twenty-first of October will hold budget hearings beginning at one P.M. The twenty-first, ADP Board, two P.M. at the auditor's office. The twenty-third, the commissioners will hold budget hearings beginning at one P.M. The twenty-third, the commissioners will hold regular session at ten a.m. that will include a presentation on Nature Scope's programs. What is that?
That's really good. That's, in Conjecton Park District, what they do is, all the money is, is a volunteer money, and they go in and they teach the kids how to use the binoculars and how to look at them. It's a nice program. And I, I think, I saw that at one of these other meetings I went to, and I thought it would be interesting to have it here. But they do it all in volunteer money, it's all volunteer money.
There's information on that.
They're not asking for money, in other words.
Then the twenty-eighth, the commissioners will hold a budget hearing at eight-thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
Then Tuesday, the twentieth, commissioners will hold regular sessions that will include a public hearing at the ten-thirty a.m. on the proposed vacation of a portion of Woodhill Drive, T R seven-three-one, Montville Township.
Will we be going out to that site at some time?
I don't think that one is required to have the viewing.
Well, maybe we could need to go out on our own, if we need to see it.
I mean, I'm thinking that WEE wrote, you know, the one over there.
Wasner.
What?
Wasner?
No, it's W I E or something, and by Butter Nutt, I don't know.
Oh, Y.
Y.
Oh, Y.
Yeah, the circumstances of that were such, you had to go out, but...
Or that's the last time you saw him.
Then on the thirtieth, the commissioners will hold a budget hearing beginning eight-thirty a.m. On November fourth, the regular scheduled commissioners' meeting is canceled. On eleven-eleven, county offices will be closed, general business and observance of Veterans Day. Twenty-four hours operation will continue to operate as usual, and the commissioners' meeting will be canceled. Then on the twelfth, we've got Georgia County Township Association meeting in Middlefield at six-thirty P.M. Three more here. On the thirteenth, commissioners will hold regular session. The thirteenth, planning commission meeting at seven P.M. in Planning Commission Meeting Room. Fourteenth, NOAACA External Affairs, eight-thirty a.m. Policy, nine-thirty a.m. And Planning and Programming, eleven a.m. in Cleveland. On the seventeenth, Family First Council, two P.M. at the Jobs and Family Services. And the eighteenth will hold regular session.
Isn't there a four-H meeting on Saturday?
The eighth.
Yeah. Are you going to let them know? I'm going to go to that.
You're going to go to that?
Yeah, could you let them know, Brian? The four-H is on the eighth?
The number eight.
It's a Saturday.
She asked you each about the township association.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go to that, yeah. The number eight.
The other thing that is not here is the Soil and Water Consortium, you're in the dinner.
The National Dinner.
You're going to go to that, Mary?
Yeah.
Diane?
Just question regarding Thursday, October thirtieth. Am I correct from this language, in assuming that there is no commissioners' meeting?
No. But that's based off of their regular meeting schedule that they set in January, that they only held meetings on Thursdays, the second and fourth.
Got it.
And there's five weeks in October this week.
Okay, thank you.
I make a lot of shit, Jerry.
Okay.
All clear?
Aye.